The fourth one was the first time. I was so patient. My station was part of my hooker's saying. He was going to say that. And it wasn't the total interest that I decided to go.
No, I think it was all the events. Everybody. She was thinking the Holy Jewish. I started in this. But I was still very bad. I was. I'm not. Yeah. Right. I got. I don't.
So we have another one back. And you can get into chambers. So I will go ahead and call our regular session to order at seven oh six P M. Again, for those that are just coming into chambers, we want to make sure that cell phones are turned off or in silence. We'll start off with a moment of silence, please.
And if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the name of the panel parties?
Councilmember Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lanell.
Here.
Williamson here and Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve of the agenda? I would.
So thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to move the agenda item G right after me, please. Will G where? Right above C.
Is there a motion to approve with that?
Any questions?
So we would move to approve the ten minutes with that.
I'd like to approve that agenda. To change the agendas.
You want to approve with that?
I'm going to approve the agenda. So I have item G over C. I have an efficient. And also, thank you, Mayor Snyder. I have a question that attend item A. A minute to discuss an October amendment in those twenty-four special evening minutes. To what item? I? Oh, I about to hit A. So is that a long space, you think? This right here?
It was. It was asked to me prior to noon. It was just, she just asked me to change the title, but it charged me out. Thanks for the up until noon.
So.
Yeah. Me, it's a lot.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So I begin the discussion approval amendment to the April twenty-fourth special evening minutes. Okay, questions for the council members?
Technically, it hasn't been set.
So I said they made one dose to amendment. So good.
Correct.
That will get them. And the other?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lanell.
Yes.
Williamson. And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
They don't have any presentations this evening. Public hearing in the public conference. So if anybody would like to stand from the gallery, you have three minutes to skip on anything that's on the agenda. Hold. Do you want to say your name, address, or we'll be given?
Good evening, Council, Mayor Snyder. My name is Shawna Gamble. My address is three fifteen Borough Street. And my comments have to do with what has now become items. Formerly items G, H, and I. So I think for me, it's important for you guys to hear this before you have a discussion about that. I have been pretty silent in terms of some of the things that have been happening in our community. I've tried to just be positive. However, things have been happening in a way that I think is important for everyone to know. Specifically for people that are like coming against what is the great opportunity for our kids here in this community. I think it's important for us to know specifically with Mayor Snyder and Councilmember Williamson, who you guys are actually dealing with. So when you're choosing to partner with people who are going against this opportunity for our kids, you're also going against an opportunity for our economy to grow for a long time. You're going against an educational opportunity for our kids. And it's okay to be against that, but I think the most important thing is that you're working with people who are spending their time trying to get black and brown and poor people in this community continuously underrepresented. I think it's important for you to understand that you're working with people who are trying to get someone like me, who whether you like me or not prosecuted for asking someone if they want a yes sign in their yard for a bond. You're working with people who are lying, cheating, stealing, and manipulating in order to get their way. You don't have to agree, but you also have to understand that if you have to do all of that to not agree, to get your way, then there's probably something wrong with what's actually happening. You're dealing with people who are calling young people, high school, young black men slaves because they are working as an apprentice in a construction company, who are degrading the college opportunity that a young woman has because it must mean that the college is less than because this child is going there. And I can expect all this from our former mayor. Everybody knows he's racist. That's what we expect. But.
So Shawna, you're going to need to be careful, I mean.
But I'm going to reclaim my time. But we, I don't expect that from you guys. So what I'm hoping is that we can figure out a way to agree, to disagree on something civilly and try to do our best as a council to move this community forward because you guys actually have the power to do whatever y'all want to do. Two people can't stop you. Three people can't stop you. And I hope to God that you guys remember that. Thank you.
Another vote for that. Anybody else like to stand and address council on agenda item?
Hi, my name is Kristy Vaughn. I live at one zero zero three East Michigan Avenue. And I am concerned about Article G, the resolution restating the city's support for Dr. Johnson's vision. And my question is to anyone here who can answer it, actually. Wasn't it three, four years ago? We had a vision for the city developed. We had a plan. And I think we hired somebody to come in and help us with this vision for our city. And I'm just wondering, what happened to that plan? And how much did we pay to develop that plan? And why are we throwing it away? Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Dave Atchison, I live at one oh eight West Erie Street. I'm not here to call anybody names, but I am here to point out that this council does not have the authority to do anything other than legislate and pass policy. The only authority this council has is what is enumerated in the city charter. And that says legislative and policymaking. There's no policy with this resolution. There's no legislation with this resolution. I would also add, there's only one elected, local elected official that has the authority by state law and our city charter to speak on behalf of the city of Albi. And that's the mayor as the chief executive officer. Chief executive officers speak on behalf of their city, on behalf of their organization. Now, in the letter that the mayor wrote and read, she represented the city. There's nothing in there that she's speaking on behalf of this council. And I remind you, you do not have the authority by charter to endorse this because it's not policy and it's not legislative. The mayor can speak on behalf of the city. You're supposed to be elected, council members, to represent your constituencies. Maybe you'll share with us this time what you've done to find out what your constituency wants because everything seems to point to the majority of people in this city. If a new school is built, it's not over on Watson Street. That's where the majority of kids live. That's where the majority of families live. And the greatest factor in determining educational outcome is involvement of the parents and the family. So stay in your swim lane. Stay in your swim lane, stick to legislation and policy. Thank you.
Good evening, Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Square Street. So the former speaker was actually incorrect. Charter in section three point one actually says the enumerated, the enumeration of particular powers, privileges, and immunities in this section is covered the power of the city. And this charter shall not be exclusive. So actually, the council and the city has powers that are written in the charter and also that are provided by law in other places. So a couple of things. I passed out a copy of the document that I obtained. And it's dated in March of this year. And tonight, the council, councilman Lawler is asking the council to reaffirm a motion that was already approved in April. And when I watched that meeting, one of the questions that was asked to councilman Williamson was, you know, the thing that he was working on, was there in any way that had anything to do with the school system and building or anything like that? And I think this is actually, I'm addressing kind of three items now at the same time, C, G, and I. So what it is, is it's a blueprint for Better Albi and it's dated March twentieth, twenty-first. And if you go in there, there's a little proposal about certain amounts to be spent for different projects in the community. Three million dollars to build a Y M C A, a million dollars for recreation parks in the city, a one million dollar recreation endowment, and then two million to support Kingsley Fund, I think it's fully with the college or maybe the community. The concern here, the big, big concern here is on the last page, there's a space for signatures for the mayor, the manager, the public safety director, the Y executive director, and councilmember Williamson. And against the speaker before me, the issue is the mayor cannot act without the pool of council. If you notice, whenever you all apply for grants, you will have to vote for that for the mayor to sign it or to designate the city manager to do that. Right? So this is a huge ethical problem because the issue is what's happening right now, I'll mention his name, John Face. He's been for months tar and feathering four councilmembers for supposed conflict of interest, which the city attorney and the others, associates of the city attorney even mentioned this back in April, really aren't conflicts. This is a conflict. This is basically putting the city's name and power behind a document that you all do not hold on. It doesn't, it does a great disservice to the council because again, the mayor, the manager of one councilperson can't do this without city council approval. Now, how this ties into the city attorney contract, I would ask you to put that on hold because I'm curious if the attorney reviewed this document and knew they signed it, right? If he did, that's a problem. If he didn't, that's another problem because they're signing these things in their capacity as city officials. So I would table that contract and I would not approve extending also the period from thirty-three months to six months if you were, if that retainer were to end. So this is a code of ethics violation. It's a tariff violation and council really needs to ask questions about it. Thank you.
Hello, Ellen Graham, three times East Michigan Avenue. Good evening. I'm here to discuss Resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-six initially proposed April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one in regards to proposal of charity by Albi and College to the city of Albi and the issue of precinct representation for two, four, and five possibly violating Act three seventeen of nineteen sixty-eight. In twenty seventeen, the Michigan Supreme Court clarified what charitable organizations are. Albi and College's tax exempt status is reliant that they continue to follow the Michigan compile laws to keep tax exemption status M C L two eleven seventy and M C L two eleven seventy-nine. The required compliance of the city of Albi and design a resolution in the greater specifics in order to receive specified charity is a large discriminatory nature. Due to the demands of location acceptance of a resolution need to bear a reasonable relationship to the charitable goal. Bosch S L C A versus Tewa Wasi Township, if you'd like to reference. A charitable institution erects or maintains public buildings or works or otherwise lessens the burden of government. Resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-six does not lessen the burden of government on the Albi and Albi and City. It doesn't at all. It requires the school board to pass a bond to erect a building for Albi and College's president's dream. If they were truly charitable, they would donate a building. They would not ask us to build it. They, they're offering to man everything, do everything, but build a building. That's our sixteen million dollars between Marshall and Albi and to do so. This has nothing to do with race. This has nothing to do with anything but making sure our children are safe and receive an education. The location of three fifteen and three nineteen East Michigan Avenue is a hundred and five feet from a toxic waste dump, not one, but three. We've made this mistake with Harrington Elementary School. We built it on a trash dump. If we build next to a toxic waste site, we are continuing environmental racism. That's what this is. Some people consider it the new Jim Crow. That's how it works. And there's also with the Act of three seventeen, make it back to what I originally was saying. You're not directly allowed or indirectly allowed to solicit a contract between any public entity or government entity, or yourself, or any co-partnership of unincorporated association on which is a partner, member, or employee. For example, an unincorporated association means an unincorporated group of two or more persons joined by mutual consent for common lawful purpose, whether organized for profit or not. For example, if two people get together and decide to operate a food truck, they form a partnership even if they file no paperwork. So we've got Holland Park, which you, this college gave you the money to be able to lay the foundation for the pavilion, which is absolutely beautiful, but it considered a partnership. You bringing forth, I'm sorry, the, this, what is this, this resolution? Means that you spoke and you have a partnership and you're steering committee. Anyway.
Have a great day. Sorry.
Hi, Morris Arboy. I live in Albi, four seventeen Elizabeth Street, Albi and Michigan. I wasn't going to say anything at the beginning. I just, you know, I can't speak to all the ordinances and everything. It would be nice to just take some of the time up here to take a deep breath, right? If we can all do that, I think probably, but I'm going to try it. Okay. So I mean, what I think what the mayor was trying to do with her letter, I don't know all the different things that might be in violation or might not, but was just to clarify whether or not the city council had or have not voted in favor of a location for a school. And it was her belief, now I don't want to put words in my mouth, I think, but in reading that letter again today, that you felt that that was not the case or that she felt that was not the case. But I think that's going to be addressed later on today. So we'll see with the real vote, with this endorsement of Dr. Johnson's support for Dr. Johnson's vision. So I guess we'll see that. But I don't, I don't see any of the other, well, I don't know. I'm just babbling here. But I thought that the mayor's letter hit the point. It might, there might have been things that I'm not aware of about the charter and everything, but did or did not the councils vote to support the location of a school? And I guess we'll see what happens later today and then the night before the bond vote. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Standing around seven thirteen Orchard Drive. So I am going to speak to the resolution. And I support the resolution. The council met in April of this year and took a stance, and it was a five to two vote, in support of what is the only plan I've yet to see in Albi and that addresses the needs of our children. And you know, I'm hearing a whole lot of smoke and a whole lot of just whatever. It's not about the kids. It doesn't interest me. This is about people. Okay? The decisions that you all are making now are going to affect babies that are not even born yet. So this, this should not be about personality conflicts. This needs to be about the future of this community. My grandbaby, your grandchildren, your great grandchildren, legacy, right? So through all that smoke and all the personal conflicts and the back and forth, keep the kids first. This resolution does not even speak to the bond. This resolution is saying we back a vision that we haven't had in years that says we're going to support our children. We are going to include our community. We are going to make things equitable. And I have yet to see anything to match it. So if you're not coming forth with something to match it, then let people do what people do when they want to help folks. And I want to say also, as my time is winding up, I'm passionate about this. I am. This is very personal for me. Council, you, you can't take, you can't do a resolution. I can remember as a school board member coming to a council meeting when council voted that they didn't support annexation. So council has done this before. This is nothing new. And you were acting well within your right. You have an attorney standing over there that would check you if you weren't, I would hope. So let's just keep the priorities focused on what matters. That's our children, our future, what this community will look like in ten to fifteen years. That's what I care about. All this other stuff is just smoke and mirrors. Thank you.
Latin girl, twelve hundred years. I'm going to say this. I've been coming to these meetings for years with different councilmen on board. The whole time I came, pretty much the councilmen went with the flow when it comes to minority people, minority kids. We did not benefit from that stuff. I got twenty grandkids, twenty grandkids. I'm proud of all of them and they suffering because the school system sucks. They, they let the school fail, they failed our kids. So Dr. J finally come up with a plan that can help my grandkids. I don't care about nobody else because my grandkids and other grandkids and other kids out here, they want that need just. The adults had the opportunity to make things right that they did. Their last previous committee had the opportunity to make things right, but they didn't. You know, we didn't have to shut our school down, but the people that was in charge didn't have the backbone to say that. So why sit here now and blame this man that was coming in looking in and seeing how destroyed our city was and now trying to make it right? That's going to benefit people that was fell into the crack a long time ago and nobody didn't care. But all of a sudden, he's the bad guy, he the boogie guy. Now we're going to throw policies and stuff up in it. And what a policy was set five years, ten years ago when our kids needed you then. Nobody wasn't around. The loans of one percent benefited off what's going on in Albi and everybody else got excluded out of program. So why sit here and perpetrate like you care about our kids when you don't? Because you had your opportunity in your blood. So leave that man alone. If you don't get on board, get on board. Get on board for the right reason. It's still your personal private, you know, condition. That's sad to me. Our kids need us. And so since you guys don't let this man that want to come in here, send him up the fender. Thank you.
Do you have Renee Miller, two oh eight Drive? I would like, I'm standing here because I would like to see the council support the vision of Albi and College's president. Why? I was thoroughly confused on this past week when I attended a meeting at Washington Gardner, a meeting of the mind. I was, I was just confused. I've been so busy. I usually try to get to a lot of council meetings and this past year I just haven't. So I thought that we were in a good place. And I was just floored when I found out that the Y M C A had pulled out. And the reason I say that is because I, I was born and raised here. I never left Albi and I've seen people leave and be away for years and come back. I see a lot of new transplants in our community. Thank you, you're welcome. But we have been here in the gutter, in the mud with it all. I never left. And we begged for years in different conversations. I would hear people talking about, why doesn't Albi and College do more? They have the money, they have the resources, they have the alumni with the money to help. Why don't they do more? We said this for twenty, thirty years. Now they're doing it and it's like, like you said, they're the bad people. I'm not saying that maybe things don't need to be tweaked or worked out or be better, but how do we not get behind it? How do we not fix this? How do we not join in and say, hey? Because I don't see anybody else running that kind of money to Albi. I'm fifty. I haven't seen it in fifty years. He has brought the best vision forward that Albi has ever had. Now, if anybody got something better or the money, bring it. Because I'm willing to listen. I'm not picking sides. I don't care if you black, white, Hispanic. I don't care what you are, Democrat, Republican. I'm not on anybody's side. I'm not pointing fingers at who's right and wrong. I want to see this community do better. And that is the best vision that I have seen in all of my adult life for here. So I'm asking the council, please reconsider. Get the white. I was so excited to hear the Y was coming. I was like, oh, I have to go to Planet Fitness. I have to look. We, they have programs built into the Y. I was so excited to see the different things and then it just all fell apart. This is crazy. We got to do better than this. So I'm just asking you guys to go back, go back to the table. Try to fix this for us. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Delaney and I live on Homer Road in Oxford Township. I just appreciate the time and I have been listening to all of the comments. I have to say that first of all, I did find it deplorable that a member of our Marshall Public School District, which includes Albi, should call our Albi former mayor a racist and then leave. I don't understand how that's considered acceptable behavior. I think that is, as a public figure, she should be censured for that. But that's a, that's another story. This vision I'm referring to, Agenda I and G. This vision doesn't come true without the bond money. A $45.5 million bond will not benefit the children. It will benefit the contractors, the builders, the sellers of material to the school district. Interestingly enough, whether you know this or not, WG Construction is owned solely by Dr. Matthew Johnson. It's not owned by the college. Look it up if you don't believe it. Go to Michigan.gov. It's public information. He is the sole proprietor of that LLC. I have some questions for the council. I hope that you will consider tabling the adoption of this resolution reinstatement. Why is the city council concerning itself with school board affairs when there are so many other infrastructure issues here in Albi that we need to deal with? Why would anyone promote a college, a private college president's vision for the city when his very purpose, by the nature of his job, is to look out for the college, the private college interests first, as he is hired to do? Is this the only vision that you have for the city of Albi as a private college president? Why haven't you gone out into the precincts, out into the community and asked everyone what we actually need, what we want? I think that it has been proven tonight that there are a lot of really vocal people here that will tell you exactly what they think the concerns are and the needs are. And they may not match up with Dr. Johnson's. And that's fair because they live here, they work here, they raise families here. They should be heard, not him. Looking at the items on the resolution, nearly all of these can be accomplished whether the elementary school is placed next to the college or not. Steam-focused elementary schools can happen at Watson. An African-American museum can still be built and visited by families whether an elementary school is next to it or not. I have, and many people that I have talked to in Albi have not received any sort of email or letter from, by precinct, from any city council person discussing this resolution. So if you have sought community input, I'd like to know who it is you talked to. Two surveys have shown that Watson Street is the preferred site. Doesn't that need further discussion and investigation by you, the council members, before you start voting on a resolution as our representatives? Harrington is close to the college now and yet the scores and the test scores are still low. I realize I'm out of time. Thank you for your concern. Thank you for your time. Please take a very close listen to the questions that I have proposed because they are not put forth to this council lightly. Thank you for your time.
Would anybody else like to stand and address? To our consist calendar items in your packets. We have the minutes from October 18th. We have the information about the rare press. Then also. Do I have a motion to approve? Support. Any comments?
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Leneau.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ree, and Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
So now on our discussion to approve candidate for precinct one. Yes, Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to nominate Donovan Williams. His name says though he had the purpose of work on his precinct. I have been out talking to a couple of people in his precinct. And they do believe that Donovan will be the best choice for them. So I'd like to nominate Mr. Williams.
Anybody else like to make a nomination?
Councilwoman Lawler said nominate, but realistically it's a motion. So we can see if there's a second for the motion to bring it forward.
Do we have any other? Comments on this?
I just want to reiterate my gratitude to all the candidates who came and shared their important insight in precinct one. I drive through it every day, being addicted to it in the precinct. And I'm excited to collaborate and continue to see all our community that this precinct in particular is very important. So I look forward to seeing this seat filled. And I just want to thank those who are demonstrating their support right now.
I'd like to hear if there are other councilmembers who wanted the other candidates as well? Or I'm supposed to hear where people were thinking that they would want to take this vote? Let's just move on.
Yes, personally. So I appreciate that councilmember's voice. And I, I think as, as if Thomas stated, she applied earlier. And to come back again really shows how much she really cares. I've been able to keep with both of the candidates and I'm very grateful for the relationships that I have prior with them to this vote. So I, I do.
Final order. Is my motion on the table?
There's a motion in a second. So there's discussion on the appointment to, yeah. Your motion is out there. Well, I think there's, there's discussion. There's this.
I think she's just coming. I, I was iterating what councilmember one intended in regards to the two candidates that we had. And I just wanted to acknowledge. I just wanted to acknowledge both of them and their efforts.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I appreciate both candidates stepping forward, putting themselves out there and, you know, addressing the council in front of the gallery. You know, that's not very traditional when you're interviewing for any type of position. And I know that puts a lot of pressure on both. So, you know, yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge both candidates. They're willing to step forward.
You have any other comments?
So I, it is tough to make a decision, you know. So quickly after, you know, introductions have been made, you know, in regards to being equitable. I also would like to see Mr. Williams appointed because it would be nice to have another male figure on your council, a male perspective.
I hate to interject.
Yeah.
While, while both candidates are very eloquent in both their presentations, this council cannot make the decision based on race, gender, ethnicity, any of those protected classes. So we should only be looking at qualifications, not gender.
So this that should be equitable. So you think there's no other comments or expressions?
City Quik Dino.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Leneau.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yeah.
Ree.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
One minute and we go. So City Quik Dino, do you read him the oath?
I'm going to let him review the resolution. I, Donovan Williams.
I, Donovan Williams.
Do some, swear.
Do some, swear.
That I will support.
That I support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state. And that I will.
That I will.
Can best my day.
Best my duty.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Disturbance to duties.
Disturbance to duties.
City of Albi.
City of Albi.
Precinct one, council member.
And six one.
So help me.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you all.
God bless you.
Make this proud.
Mr. Williams coming on over.
Thank you, Senator Williams.
So councilwoman Williamson, you have your agenda in progress. Your agenda active?
Yes.
So we are moved, item G. To this position.
Okay.
So that's what we are going to discuss. So did you find it?
Yeah.
So I want to turn this over to Councilwoman Lawler. So that she will go ahead and read the resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve? No more?
No more.
Councilwoman Lawler, you want to read the resolution?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Resolution restating the city's support for Dr. Johnson's vision. Whereas on Saturday, April 24th, 2021, the Albi City Council made a special meeting, approved by two in motion to support Albi College President Johnson's approach to private, public partnership outlined in the letter entitled Vision for the Future of Albi, the College and the City. And whereas the Albi City Council's approved motion supporting the public-private partnership vision made no exception. So it included support for the entire contents of the vision document, thus including and supporting the Washington Gardner site action. And whereas the Albi City Council recognizes that access to quality education is an essential component of a sustainable competitive community for residents and businesses. And whereas Albi College's president and board of trustees have expressed their desire to both strengthen the college's engagement with the community and to ensure that the college's future planning and investments are undertaken with a consideration of how they might also benefit the community as a whole. And whereas Albi College President Matthew Johnson's letter proposed a visionary plan for a public-private partnership and support of public education that will redevelop the site of the former Washington Gardner School by locating a new science, technology, engineering, arts, and math steam-focused elementary school adjacent to the site, establishing an Albi African-American history museum within the former, former school building, expanding Albi College's facilities to include new construction of a theater, a music performance hall, an NCAA compliant athletic arena, and instruction and practice spaces for the college's education and music departments, respectively. Whereas the Albi City Council in April and now finds that Dr. Johnson's plan offers the best opportunity to strengthen public education in the city of Albi, especially as it will create a unique set of wraparound opportunities and services for children and families of Albi. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Albi City Council hereby, again, expresses its strongest support for the vision and plan articulated in the April 21st, 2020 memorandum submitted to the council and community by Albi College President Matthew Johnson, entitled "A Vision for the Future of Albi, the College and the City", which included the Washington Gardner site option for the location of the proposed new Marshall Public Schools Elementary School in Albi. Be it further resolved that Albi City Council supports the vision outlined by Dr. Johnson, even though the battle free YMCA has decided to no longer partner with Albi College. I hereby certify that the amendment was adopted on November 1st, 2021, in a regular session of the Albi City Council. And this is a true copy of that resolution. So as I stated, Ms. Mayor, in my first paragraph, we did take a vote of by two two. There was a comment made in the last meeting that we had that it was a lot of confusion about what you had said at the school board meeting and that you weren't supposed to do that because you didn't get confirmation from us to speak on behalf, on our behalf. So with that being said, all this is, is either we are going to support it or we are not. It was already voted on, but now since it's on paper, it's a problem. So I'm really just putting this piece of paper out here, this resolution, to say, are we going to support it or are we not? Because the community does need to know. If you do not support it, okay. If you support it, awesome. So I just wanted us to make a statement tonight, if we support it or not. And that's, that's just the reason why I wrote this resolution.
Well, I understand how, you know, like I said before, when we're working as council votes, maybe yourself as the mayor, when we're making decisions, where we're casting our vote, we're doing that to represent the city. And we're doing that to represent our precincts. So like I said before, you know, when you're up here, you know, because you said you're in conflict. And I say, you just got to remember, you're representing your people who live within your precinct. So we just want to make sure that that's the voice you're bringing forth, not personal opinions, not personal agendas, but that you're actually voting by your precincts, what they want. So that's just what I want to make sure we're doing. When I made that statement at the board meeting, the public school boarding, that was because their minutes were inaccurate. And that was the only thing I wanted changed. Because what we voted on in a special council meeting was not just that. What we voted on, as Councilwoman Leneau stated before we voted, was the public-private partnership. That's what we voted on. That was not reflected in the Marshall Public School Board meeting. So when I went back to review that whole video, of that whole meeting, like I had told Councilwoman Leneau and Mayor Kropkamp Jackson. like I had told Councilwoman LeNew and Mayor Kropke Jackson, there were several spots within that meeting session where folks stated, this is not what we're doing. We are not mandating where they put the school. We are not condoning where it's going. This is not to talk about the elementary being put at Washington Gardner. So that's where I was coming from, because if you go back and you listen and you watch that video, you will hear different people making those different statements. So what we voted on, again, was not what was reflected in the board minutes. And that's the only thing I said I wanted to change, and I even told Councilwoman LeNew, that was my intent.
So um, I think this will um, for me, calm down a lot of the gossip um, if we actually put it on paper and actually um, say what we supported at that time. Um, I think a lot of those rooms will be put to rest. Um, one question that I do have is for Councilmember Williams. Um, have you had time to um, review Dr. Johnson's vision?
I've had a chance to look through the packet. That was enough. Let's move. Councilwoman.
So I, I've thought about this a lot since the packet came out with this resolution. And my, my main, my main, my overall main concern from where I sit and this council is that um, I, I have experience on both a school board and now a council. And I know how difficult being on a school board and hearing another subsidiary, not a subsidiary board, but a member board in the region that we work, when they, when they make platitude or when they say what you should or should not be doing, how much harder that makes the job of a governing body who actually has the authority to make those decisions. So the Marshall Public School Board represents more than just the city of Albion, it's the city of Marshall and multiple counties surrounding us. And tomorrow, November second, is the vote on the bond when everybody in that, in the entire geographic region is going to go to the polls and vote on whether a bond is going to happen or not. And out of respect for the Marshall Public School Board, uh, the chair of that board, who I worked with extensively on annexation, um, when that was a contentious issue five years ago, out of respect for them, um, I would like to see the city of Albion's council reserve the right to table this measure and let the voters on the school board figure out where the school is going to go, the voters decide if a bond is going to happen, and not make a statement, if we say tonight, yes, we want the school right next to Washington Gardner, but then tomorrow, a majority of Albion citizens say no, what does that say for all of us up here? It says that we didn't listen to the people or ask the people in our precinct. And, and, and so by chance, tomorrow, tonight, we say yes, and tomorrow the bond passes over on the precinct, we sure struck some luck. But what I understand is that there has not been deep intervals made, and the surveys that have been done say that the majority of the community would like the school to not be at Washington Gardner. So out of an abundance of caution, out of abundance of respect for the Marshall Public School Board, it would be best for this body to allow the Marshall Public School Board to do their work with the constituents that include more than just the city of Albion.
Here, here.
Councilwoman. I think everybody has to speak for their own precinct, because I have some in mind that definitely do not want it there, but I have quite a number in mind that, because they see what's going to better all the shit.
Yes, I'm sorry. Councilwoman LeNew, it's worse. Okay, I'll go here. Thank you. I didn't, you can go.
Somebody go.
I'll be getting ready. Um, I would, I mean, I agree that we do need to go out and make sure that we do make sure our precincts are, they do want this. And we should um, be voting for our people. I know I have some that have reached out to me and asked for me not to speak for them. I know how I have spoken for myself, okay? But as a group of a council, we need to make sure that when we are speaking, I, I, I like the vision, I can say that, but I can't speak for everybody but the vision. There's people here that have told us about the vision. So when I speak, I'm going to have to be speaking for myself. I cannot speak for people as a whole until I've done my.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I want to thank Councilwoman Lawler for taking the initiative to read clarity after the last meeting and the public comments that we had tonight, it's clear that people do want to have more information and understand um, where we're coming from, when we made the decision that we had, and what they're getting themselves involved with in the school bond proposal. It was said that this is not related to the school bond proposal. So in terms of um, the importance of that passing, if we're putting our trust in first, I think that uh, with, with all that is included with this, being predicated on having that bond pass, it is imperative that we have the research that's always going to come after a bond passes and the resources are allocated to ensure that a location is a safe location, um, that we reconsider this uh, resolution and preserve the, the messaging for a time when we have more information. Um, again, I, I appreciate the need for clarity, but I think that if we um, are going to, to make sure that we're taking everything into account that we need to, that this is something that we could vote on at a later time. Um, I, I have reached out to a Marshall Public School Board member who lives in my precinct, and I took the time to meet with them directly. And there are a lot of concerns, and I think that the more that we uh, take the time that we have to listen to our residents, the better we will be able to provide clarity for our residents. I think right now, there is just a lot of discord. So again, I appreciate the desire to hear more and to put this on paper, but I don't think we're ready to support this. Um, in, in the same way that it's written right now, um, I brought I don't, I onto the agenda to make sure that it is clear what we voted on on April fourth, uh, excuse me, April twenty fourth, um, because of um, the, the mayor's iteration on October eleventh to the Marshall Public School Board and the resulting correspondence. I think there is a need for clarity, and that's why I brought that additional agenda item. I will.
Any other comments? Yes.
Um, in an effort to really try to find some partnership here, I think what would be better for this resolution is instead of a, I, I get the sense that there might be a vote to be able to table this. Um, and I think that that would be a better act to take um, to show that we're willing to listen and be a partner with the college, um, and not vote down a vision. Uh, because that would, that would say, we don't, that would be saying the opposite of, I think, what most of us want to say is that we want to be an inclusive community that wants to share in the vision of the future for Albion. And so instead of voting down a resolution about um, Dr. Johnson's vision, I think it would be better to table this. Um, and whether we bring it back or not, it's completely up to us. Um, but instead of taking a no vote on some of this, I think that, that would be saying, you don't want to, you know, that, that would be the wrong message to send to any community partner. Um, and so I, I can move to table if you would like, but um, I wanted to hear other council members' thoughts on that, um, because I think that the negative vote is actually not the right way to go.
Let's. Yes, Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, as I stated before, um, this is just a reiteration of what was the five to two vote. And um, for anybody that wants to know, that is, that was my whole purpose in doing it. Um. It, this is, uh, I believe this is a touching situation. Um, but at the same time, our community knew that we voted five to two. And for the community, or even ourselves, um, to say, well, hold it, wait up. You know, where was all the con- the conversation when we had it? Where was everybody? I, I, I mean, that was the time to say, hey, hold up, you know, uh, this vision might not be right, it might not be for us. So I'm just um, a little uh, disappointed that now everybody wants to come out and speak against it, when you could have spoke against it in April? You could have spoke against it in April. We don't, we live in a bad.
Councilwoman LeNew. I had brought up those concerns at that meeting, specifically, you know, so the content that other folks are, you know, bringing, expressing their concerns. And those are my concerns too.
Mm-hmm.
If you, if you remember, I started off with my concerns about that. And so I just, and not a lot of people knew about this, I think, from the get-go. As more meetings were being held, more people were kind of catching wind. I think that's kind of how people were starting to hear about this. But I think initially, you know, like, when he was rolling this out, it, there were going to be a lot of folks that were aware or had been given the opportunity to give input for this. So I think, no, that's, I don't know if this is coming from. Mayor from Penn Jackson?
Yeah, I mean, I just want clarity, that we're not saying that we don't like this vision, but we just need to do more diligence to, for our precincts, is what I'm saying, to make sure that we can go out and have surveys. We still want everyone to go out and do their due diligence tomorrow, because I can't say all those words, okay? And we can't, we still can't tell them what to do or how to do, okay? But we can do our due diligence and go out into our precincts and find out what everyone wants so that we can do what we need to do as a council as a whole.
So Councilwoman LeNew.
I move to table.
Can I read for them, Mr. Washington?
Yeah.
I recognize there is a motion on the table.
I can retract this.
I just, I wanted to be clear that um, this, this vision was brought forth because there was a lack of engagement. So I appreciate that you recognized how important it was and want to make sure we are all on the same page. I think that the resistance for um, legal concerns, the many issues that were raised tonight are indicative that further engagement is needed in order for us to conduct ourselves responsibly. And I immediately received feedback that we were having undue influence as a governing body. And me, as a council member, of course, I want to take into account the feedback um, regarding um, what, what is an ethical way to move through this and to use our platform. And, and I think that the, the feedback that we're getting um, relates to this is a, a very critical topic that we need to take very seriously. So I appreciate you facilitating that by bringing it forward, and I, and I in no way am rescinding my support for this. Um, I, I just want to make that clear that I think um, there's, there's a need for further engagement before um, we make an additional resolution at this time.
I move to table the resolution.
That's a word. Any other comments? Did you correct the windows or are we going to table?
LeNew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Ms. Mayor.
Yes. So now we're on to. See, so the, say, the.
Please, I'm next. Oh, may I want to go first?
Go first.
Before.
So just briefly, um, for, just to reiterate, uh, especially for the new council members, who are members who are just joining us tonight, uh, this year actually marks my, my tenth year with the city of Albion, with, between both my former firm and the current firm. Continues to be a pleasure to serve the city. Um, this is the identical contract um, that the council approved last year. There are two modifications. One, the annual retainer was increased by two point five percent. Uh, so it was a pretty modest increase. The only modification, substantive modification that remains is that the um, in, in the event that the council were to ever seek to terminate the contract, it's subject to a six-month notice as opposed to a three-month notice. The reason for that is um, both the duration of service in the city and the size of the contract. And given that the manager of the city attorney is the only two that report directly to councils to make it more on par with the city manager's contract, it's like, basically she has a six-month, whatever, six months severance. Um, so we have a six-month termination provision in here. This contract wouldn't start until January one of twenty twenty-two, so as not to disrupt this year's um, budget. Um, so I, I know I've spoken with the finance director, he's planned accordingly. Um, and just to uh, assuage uh, the council's concern if they have any, there was a comment made regarding our review of a, a document earlier. To my knowledge, it's the first time I've ever seen that document, so. Um, and I've seen it, I would have made amendments to it. Um, certainly someone may correct me if I'm wrong if it wasn't to me, but I don't know how to do editing a document, but.
I was just going to say, that was um, the document, it was a work in progress, I guess. So that document was in that sort, nor, neither was the document submitted next time.
The only, I, so I can say is the only agreement I believe I've reviewed and edited for the community foundation was one that this council approved um, in this past May, I think it was Resolution nineteen of this year, so. Um, that's just a, a swage and concern to councilmen as a result of that comment. However, um, I, I hope to continue serving the city. Happy to answer any questions about the contract.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the, the document that was kind of given to ultimate, that was a very first rough draft of, definitely a document in fact. The foundation's attorneys before anything ever made it to official Gifte, many months later, um, had everything appropriately represented, in fact, the work group even changed after this. So the work group that started in February wasn't even the same work group um, by the time the Gifte made it through. Um, and then at the appropriate time for the foundation, the local council from common and national attorney uh, office that also represents the Lions, reviewed it, we then gave it over to Tony Hartness to make sure that we didn't make any of that stuff. So, and again, that was the final last one, a month prior to the Gifte announcement. So, and again, I appreciate your very time, Matt, when that came up.
You're referring to one of his group by resolution?
Yeah.
Questions or comments for Tony Hartness? Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, thank you, Ms. Mayor. So um, I am asking a council to table this and all the approved um, uh, items that need approval. And the reason why I'm asking is so that the, uh, so that Councilmember Williams has an appropriate amount of time to make a informed decision.
Yeah. I just want to comment, there are two other things that we need to have approved so that we can have our engineer start moving on different projects, so I would just.
Yeah, I think there are, we have time sensitive things that need to get approved.
One other question. My first, um, is my wish to any disagreement of the correct management leaders first, so if it was table with even two or three weeks, would that impact anything?
Well, so here's the thing, you're having a budget engine this weekend. And so, if I, I don't want to speak to the finance director, but it would be helpful. Um, I assume it's helpful to finance, and I see the same engine, not a guest, to have an answer on it tonight. I'm just speaking for myself, I mean, I would like to have this squared away sooner than later. I mean, I, I'm not going to press the council, obviously, but uh, you know, I, I would prefer that the council take it up tonight, but I'm not, I'm not going to stop and repeat if it doesn't happen.
I mean, I think that when we all get nearly elected, we're all expected to make decisions, um. So, nothing was tabled when I started, so.
The, the only, sorry, the only thing I would add is, um, this is the exact same contract that this council previously approved, with the exception of the two changes I pointed out tonight. There's nothing complicated about that, and with all due respect to Councilmember Williams, I mean, he obviously wasn't part of my most recent review, the remainder of council laws. Um, certainly he'll be privy to my upcoming review next year, but um, it's the balance of council that really was a part of that and, and uh, keep that in mind.
Yes, Mayor from Penn Jackson.
Yeah, so I want to go on page two on eight. So what was changed was the hundred and eight days, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And before it was ninety days?
Correct.
And what was the other amendment?
The annual retainer was. The annual retainer was increased two point five percent. So it used to be ninety seven five, now it's one hundred thousand.
Councilwoman Mike? Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As I stated, um I would like to table all items, action items for approval so that he has the amount of time to review. He has not reviewed. I do understand that we, um some of us haven't had time to table any decision that was made when um they came to council. But uh I really think it's unfair for him to um approve anything without him knowing what he has approved me or, you know, having to sit down with someone and say, you know, they tell him, you know, okay, this is what this is. We can always call a special meeting. Um but I think is out of respect, um I think that's, I I just think that that is the appropriate thing to do. Not you.
Councilwoman.
I think uh I I would add to the conversation that Councilman Williams, congratulations, by the way, welcome to council. I I am smiling in the middle of the mask, but congratulations. Um if if council, uh I mean, Councilmember Williams is a free thinking person who's been keeping track of what's going on in council and um who clearly has done his homework to join us this evening. Um I feel that every council member knew, especially me, when I was on council, gets a little of a pass on, you know, things that are uh maybe out of ordinary that you may not know. So I think if Councilman Williams wants to abstain from voting on this particular issue or issue, doesn't feel like you've, you know, been able to really grasp he could do that or he could vote um his the way he would like to vote on that. I I remember my first meeting on council was the budget and so and that was huge because what am I doing my first year, my first meeting on council approving the city budget? So uh again, I would like uh to hear a Councilmember Williams would prefer. And again, I want to have a lot of respect for the other agents on the agenda uh that do need attention tonight. Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, oh, I may even ask the city attorney. Is it possible to recuse yourself from this because I'm not aware of? So the way our charter reads is if you're, if you want to abstain from voting for a reason that isn't a financial conflict of interest, you can, but the remainder of the council would have to excuse you from the vote. So um you or a member of council would have to raise that prior to the vote and then they would vote on whether or not to allow you to recuse yourself from that vote and then they would go around and make questions. So to sure answer your questions, yes.
Welcome to council.
So Councilman Williams, would you like to recuse yourself from this?
Yes.
So do we have a second for him to recuse himself? I support it. So beginning with the vote, I vote for you.
Yes.
Okay. Any question?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Reed? Jackson?
Yeah.
Lawler?
No.
Leno?
Yes.
Williams?
We're doing.
So you're saying, yes, you to recuse yourself?
Yeah.
Who is here?
Yes. So do you have a motion and support?
No. Yeah, Councilman Lawler voted no, so um he it has to be the all remaining members to vote for. It's not a majority.
Yes, we don't.
So you got a message?
So we got a vote.
Motion was on the table.
Hmm?
Motion was on the table. I second Councilmember Lawler's motion to table this.
Well, Councilmember Lawler's motion is to table all.
To table all action items?
That was her motion.
And so, okay, I'm sorry.
If I can, I just want to reiterate, do you have?
Please, thank you. So um I was saying that to give him ample amount of time to so far this in. Not to um go against the grant or anything, but to provide him with information. That was, that was, that's why I said um to. Or to.
Yes, I just want to, we do have times instead of things that need to be approved by council tonight to move forward in regards to our master plan update and then the north Albion chief bridge. And then I just want to confirm with Senator Camino that all of the candidates for precinct one was provided with the package at the same time that all of the council members for the enough time to review all the materials prior to being appointed um in debates.
Mayor, can we have a motion on this here?
Yes. There was a motion made by Councilman Lawler to table all action items.
To give him ample amount of time to digest.
Yes, so can I just confirm that um should Councilmember Williams um decide that he um is not in a position to take action, he cannot stay from any votes? Is that accurate?
No, our charter mandates that all council members have to vote except if they if if they have a financial conflict of interest or if it's not a financial conflict of interest, they have to be excused by all remaining council members.
I know, thank you.
So just for point of clarity, we we gave um Councilmember Williams the opportunity to abstain from a vote tonight, especially under this measure. And then because one council member voted no, now that means he either cast a vote on it. Yeah, yes, a vote on it either way, as long as we are looking for a rest. So we achieved the exact opposite of what we wanted.
So now we have the question where we have to have you put down the votes.
Question.
So. So we're going on another that we're approving Collins' contract. So we have um voting on the motion after four.
Is there a second?
We got the vote.
Councilmember?
What?
To approve the contract, to approve Collins' contract.
No one, no one voted for that, haven't they?
You did. At the very beginning.
I just didn't talk about it. Learned that it's there.
There was a motion to approve the motion support.
Because we didn't discuss.
I'm. So I mean, if you have the motion on the table right now, we need to look forward.
So you had, okay, so just so the council's clear, there was a motion to approve the contract and there was a second. There was discussion, Councilwoman Lawler made a motion to table all action items. That motion failed for lack of a second. It resulted uh a motion to excuse Councilmember Williams um which failed because of the lack of unit, lack of unanimous vote for major members of council. So what you have left before you is the motion and the second to approve the contract.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I hope that we um approve the retainer agreement with the amendment of the um item eight remaining at ninety days for an application that is being changed to one hundred and eighty days.
Folks are. Sorry, so um I have number eight instead of it being one hundred and eighty days for notification to. All right, yes, Councilwoman.
Does the heart and law firm agreeable to that? I mean, that's a change in what you what you expressed in post session, so I just want to make sure that before we take an affirmative vote on something that changes the contract that you are discussing, that you intend to say.
So for ten years, we've had it at ninety days. The contract has grown over the course of the decade. The reason that we're asking for that is because of the duration we've served the city, because of the size of the contract after a decade. And to put it on par with the city manager's contract, as the city council's aware, the city manager was the other only other individual in the city that answers council has a, I believe, a six month provision.
Not right away.
Eventually, eventually, it's a six month provision. Granted, she's been with us in in year one as city manager. And again, I've been with the city for ten years. So this is basically put it on par with this city manager's contract and previous city manager's contract. I mean, a a ninety day window is not a very long period of time. And and quite frankly, I think um in all fairness to the firm, I mean, I think a longer period warranted. Um I'm not, you know, it's, it's not a break naked a break it for me. I mean, we're going to continue to serve the city with the same level of service, um even if you didn't give us an increase or make this change. But it's something that we've requested as I think a modest modification to the contract um in recognition of our service and and in recognition of the positive feedback that the firm got at its annual review. So I asked that if that ever made, but.
So we have a motion to read as a court, is that correct? Another discussion? For to return to ninety days.
We're voting on an amendment to the candidates before we move forward on.
I, my motion was to approve of that amendment. And I said it.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed? But on the ninety day.
Yeah, so we're we're affirming the contract with the amendment of taking it back to ninety days instead of one hundred and eighty days.
You've got two motions here. So let's, you have to have a motion, you have to have a vote on the amendment and then one on the motion unless it's going to be a friendly amendment, so.
Councilmember Lee is trying to pass as well as pass an amendment and pass the resolution all or the uh all at once?
As a friendly amendment.
Okay.
I think he's saying.
He didn't say that, but we're trying to figure out like, is that what it is?
So for the council, we knew that maybe we were.
So that that's what I said was, yes.
My response was um with consideration was there. That was my understanding of this.
So are we good with that, Bill?
So we're saying same, yeah.
Correct. So we still to within what amendment, are we voting on one eighty or the nine?
So what what they had proposed is approval of the contract with the friendly amendment of taking back the um hundred and eighty days for red notification to ninety days. And so that it was kind of like a joy. So then I'm going to have another vote?
No, so this is just.
Yeah, okay. So yes.
Yes. Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Leno?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And your name?
Yes. Next, uh do I have a motion to approve the second reading? To the chapter one hundred, article two, section two point two for the overlay. For the marijuana facility. Do you have a motion? No. We have questions or comments? This is our second reading of Collins, I mean, truly have this in there.
Okay, so uh we talked about this at the last council meeting, this is your second reading. What this uh ordinance does is it um creates overlay districts um within the existing M one and M two zone districts, which is the industrial park. Basically, what it um says is that in the future, any um medical marijuana facilities or adult use marijuana establishments have to operate within those established overlay districts. The planning commission approved uh the the overlay districts. We've taken great care to form the overlay districts around facilities that exist within the industrial parks. And none of those existing facilities should be affected. The only one that's outside the existing or outside the um overlay districts is the one medical marijuana dispensary that's operating on Eaton Street. This takes effect at the um November twentieth. Uh so basically, there's a one day overlap between the effective date of the overlay districts and the general ordinances that the council previously approved modifying the medical marijuana and um adult use facilities. And so basically, um in addition to the existing process that the um the marijuana facilities go through when they apply with the city, they'll also apply to planning commission for special use permits to operate within the overlay district. Um overlay districts are something that are frequently used in other municipalities for marijuana facilities. By way of example, the county township has um overlay districts in place for the marijuana facilities. So have any answer, any questions?
Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
All right, so when this um overlay district, the retail spaces will be relegated to this area as well?
The city currently does not permit adult use retail sales.
With this limit into that area, the city ever did?
Yes. And I would add that the city can always modify or add to the overlay districts.
Do you have any other questions, questions or comments?
Um, no.
Any other questions or comments?
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Leno?
Yeah.
Williamson?
No.
Williams?
No.
And your name?
Yes.
Next, we have, do I have a motion to um approve the White Men Associates proposal for recreation, that's the thing.
The most.
The board. And then just.
Yes, thinking here, so as you can recall, we are in the process of updating our current five year master plan. We are under a tight deadline to get this updated as it required requires um it to be ready and available for review prior to it being approved by council. Um and that deadline is the beginning of February to bid, submit it to the state to be eligible for all of the DNR um grants this next upcoming year. And so White Men are the engineering firm that the city has been agreeing with, has offered to assist us with this updating process for a total of eighteen thousand. This includes eleven thousand five hundred to prepare the actual recreation master plan and then another sixty five hundred to prepare a grant application once our master plan has been updated and approved by council. So how DNR grants work, if we work, once we get our master plan updated and we submit a grant application, that grant application will not be reviewed and approved by the state until the end of twenty twenty two to where the funds will not be received by the state for twenty twenty three. That way, we're almost halfway through our five year recreation plans and we should be getting in the process of reviewing and updating this. So this is just making sure that we take advantage of having an updated master plan and being able to get it to the state to obtain some of those grant funds. So I've been able to assist us with making sure that we get a um a solid grant application completed and submitted to the state. So city administration is just recommending approvals so that we can continue to move along um with getting the master plan updated.
Questions for senior agents? Alex?
Yes. I did already have um Tom Hall or some of the the word, the citizens going to give information on what they might want to see in the rest of them.
Yes. Yes, as you can recall, our first form of engagement was a community wide survey that the Recreation Commission recently released at the beginning of the summer. And then their next um stage, I believe the commission has talked about going into the schools to get some feedback from the children as well as from our residents. We we are required to do a second form of engagement with this master plan, so we will, we will have that second session um here in the other chair. We, we are required to do a second form of engagement with this master plan, so we will, we will have that second session, um, here in the other chair.
Council member Reed?
I know, uh, when I went over the information about the recreation plan, there was a lot of, uh, minorities that did not do it. For one, they did not have access to computers, for another, and even I, when I started doing the plan online, ran into a glitch to where what I answered evidently was not what was supposed to be. And I could go more further. And I ended up stopping it and then doing, I think, but I, I would just hope that something would be done to what everyone could, could get, uh, opportunity to make that statement.
Yeah, so I, I knew that, um, you know, like, city manager said that initial one was a survey. They had an electronic plate and on paper. Um, we have an upcoming town hall in November, so we can definitely bring this up for in hiding of discussion so that we can get community input. So, you know, folks, when you hear that we're having either town halls or preseason meetings, we highly encourage you all to attend so that we can get your feedback that way. Um, we do have, um, so I think two in November that we're planning on doing. So we do want to do as much as possible. You have questions or comments? City, come here.
Council member Jackson?
Yeah.
Lawler?
Yeah.
Ladoo?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. I have a motion to approve the design engineering services, um, for the water town being approved.
So.
Is that good? You're up.
So this is a proposal for the engineering, for the replacement of the old industry bridge. We got a, we got a grant of ninety five percent from the federal state government, uh, for the construction, but that is not covered in the engineering. That's what this proposal is for. Uh, this is one of the time sensitive things, city manager was talking about. We can get this approved tonight, we may be able to start working ASAP. Uh, that way we can stay on the timeline that's in this, that can do that. We really want us to begin construction somewhere twenty three. As you all know, the bridge desperately needs to be replaced. So by approving this, we can begin that process.
So what Dr. Miller said, if you can recall, the city received a grant on the local, um, bridge grant in the amount of, I believe, one point seven million dollars, which will cover the complete replacement of the North Elm Street Bridge, which we all know is long and swell over two. However, we are only required to cover the remaining fifteen percent of the estimated cost, which is the engineer, um, cost to design a project. Um, it's a long process, although the construction will not start until twenty twenty three. Our engineer firm, they have a lot of work that they need to, um, get going on prior to the construction. Um, you guys recently approved, um, a proposal to complete a muscle study. So that's a part of this process in preparing for the replacing of the bridge. So we're just looking to get this proposal approved so that White Men and Associates can, um, get started on designing, um, that project.
Do you have any questions for the, for the, yeah?
This is kind of fair, um, trying to make sense. So the one point seven million dollars covers ninety five percent of the grant? And then the remaining five percent is the engineering cost?
Yes, which is the hundred and eighteen thousand.
How simple is that bridge now? It seems as though it's even colder than, um.
The, so the reason why we shut it down to one lane in the middle is the state feels that it's falling on the outside. Uh, could potentially be a hazard under heavy load. That's why we keep all traffic in the center where it's not exposed.
The state came out and recently inspected that bridge, and that was the recommendation to bring it down to one lane to, to get the weight off of those outside beams until it can be ordered replaced. So we encourage any residents to obviously take an alternate route if you can to avoid, um, going over the bridge. But if you have to do so, please stay within that center, that center lane in you, um, will be good to go. But the state has inspected, and that is their recommendation until we can get it replaced.
How's order? When they replace the bridge, are they going to replace the walkways on the side?
Yes, that's what we're kind of wanting. Um, that's a good thing with working with White Men Associates because they are assisting us with the recreation plan. If you can recall, the river trail that is currently being extended along Austin Ave is supposed to go down to our public street. So we will tie those projects in to extend that walkway to include a trail, um, along that bridge way. So yes, we are going to, um, collaborate those two plans to make sure that both projects can be addressed at the same time.
You have a question or comments? City, come here.
Council member Lawler?
Yeah.
Ladoo?
Yeah.
Williamson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed? Jackson?
Yeah.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Next, uh, Major Judd, we have a discussion of our recreation limits, hoping for the help there for the council.
So, uh-huh. Thank you for, uh, putting this on. But you have different questions about the why and the pullout. So I kind of wanted people to, they're asking questions, to let us know what's going on so that we can all be aware of it. Um, one thing was, um, so how does the why, how does the why plan on funding their program? With, you know, pulling up, basically, where are they going?
I, yeah, I just want to clarify any rumors, the Y and C has not pulled out of the service agreement with the city of Albi. So the current service agreement that we have in place is only between the city of Albi and the Battle Creek Park and C A. On that head, it has nothing to do with Albi College. We do not have a service agreement in place with them. We utilize the facilities that is handled by the Battle Creek Y and C A. Um, so our service agreement is still in place. I, um, they, I believe they still are utilizing the Washington Gardner facility to hold classes as well as the Opportunity High School, um, where they are holding all of their, um, swim lessons currently. But the Battle Creek Y and C, we have not ended the, um, current one year service agreement that we have in place yet.
So, so when does that one year, um, service agreement?
It's the summer of twenty twenty two.
Oh.
Twenty twenty two, February.
And so will it be brought to council before?
Yes.
Okay. What maybe, again, where?
Yes, far too, um, obviously enough time before renewal, so obviously you can provide feedback if you're like the way, the direction that it's handling, if you would like to go a different way or look into other options that will all, um, be provided to you. And it's essentially up to council to make that decision.
Right. Thanks.
Council member?
Uh, council member, morning, can I be kind of candid first? Oh, thank you, Mayor Snyder. I recall, I think when we were first, uh, turned into this agreement, I requested that we have some data on the Albi residents are utilizing these services, just to have, like, the assurance that we know this is reaching our residents. And, um, I'm, I'm curious about that and, and wondering if that can be included, um, as a companion overview to ensure that this is actually reaching our residents. And really breaking down that data to make sure, in particular, I heard our youth really are doing service as well as we were hoping they would. Um, so that's just some feedback, a way to, to help inform that process.
So I know that, that the two members were here for the last council meeting, but they were before, right?
They were before.
Yeah, so they've given us some of their numbers, but, um, it'd be good to know how many kids are kind of taking part in the swim programs.
Yeah, um, yes, I can provide it to you because I believe they did provide an update, and not only Albi residents, but they have the numbers on, um, their residents from surrounding communities that are coming and taking advantage of the programs as well. So I'd be happy to provide that information to council.
Mayor for Johnson, would you?
Yeah, um, so the facilitator of this is, is me, I mean, you, Joe, I'm not sure. So she, will she come?
Yep.
Catch her, so.
Absolutely.
Council member two?
Um, I seem to recall when we approved this contract that it wasn't actually for the full amount of the recreation village, that there is actually purposefully left on some money in the recreation budget. Um, so because we, we, there was an understanding when we entered into the agreement with the law that told you nineteen, um, kind of, kind of hammered a lot of different, um, activities in the community. And then we're going to be sort of swimming through this and provide the other opportunities for other organizations, not happen, um, to take advantage of rec dollars to support other programs with you that might not, that's still in the law's purview. Um, is that money available, um, still in that budget? And then, um, will they need to contract the city manager to start talking about those conversations with them, assuming, I think they do a contract will eventually come to council, correct?
Correct, yes. Um, and I agree, Director, I'm interested in too. Um, but we do still have that, I believe our, uh, cost for the one year service agreement is a hundred and fifteen thousand with the Battle Creek Y and C A. Um, and I believe after, um, oh, what is the word, we, we after the capture is, um, obtained, we have a balance of, I believe, one sixty, little over one sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand. So there is still some money available. There are any programs who are interested in providing any recreation, um, programs, I'm happy to meet with them to discuss a possible partnership, um, because they, yes, that, that agreed that one need to come be for, for official approval.
And is the why, is, is, is the Y and C open to that partnership as well? It doesn't have to be just an asylum to be a partnership, the why against the, correct?
I can't speak on behalf of the law, but I can imagine why they would not favor that to another, another local organization.
Council member?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. And, and it's also, um, it's a difference, but, um, I recall people who, as I said, have previously facilitated your programs, uh, wanted to know if they, if they would have access to those financial resources. Um, are there certain qualifications, like when we're talking to people, do they need licenses or certain things, they want it to qualify to receive those funds from the city? Like insurance or?
I, they do have to have a, they do have to carry an insurance. I don't know the amount everybody has to either match the cities or, um, I have a determined for that, but they do have to have an actual active insurance policy. Um, but licenses, I'm not aware of any requirements or anything like that. But I, if you know of anyone interested, just please send them my way. I'd be happy to, to meet with them and have a discussion. Thank you.
We have questions or comments?
Okay. Uh, so we are, especially the approval of April twenty fourth, so there's some of that.
Yeah, I, so I'm sorry. I move, is this the time set and opening of the motion? Yeah, so I move that the April twenty fourth special reading minutes state that the council approved a vision that was expressed with renderings. And that's the, the purpose of this agenda item, that there were renderings included in that, and that that be expressed in our minutes, so we are what we call it on.
Is there a report?
Report. Council member?
Yeah, propose, um, to council member, uh, Ladoo, um, and all of our council members, including, um, Mayor Snyder. Um, in an effort to keep in line with what we've been working on in council over the past month, especially, um, when it comes to transparency, uh, civility, uh, cooperation, um, decreasing, uh, moments of isolated, uh, conversation that could, is this a hot opportunity for the mayor and, uh, council members, uh, Ladoo and maybe another council member to come together offline, review the video, um, and come, and maybe there is, maybe there does need to be a change to the minutes of the meetings. In our packet, we didn't have the minutes for the meeting. Um, we don't have the video readily available for us to view tonight. Um, and I feel like this could, um, again, this is the, I think, I think the intentions are of the best nature. And I think there's a possibility for council member Ladoo and Mayor Snyder to talk about the side, uh, councils changes and bring it back at the next meeting to make a correction or recommended correction. And if the correction can't be reached, or a agreement cannot be reached between the two of you, um, then of course we need to bring it back to council. But, um, I think tonight, or we don't have the minutes in front of us, we, we, we don't have the video here to watch. And I think it would be the better use of our time, the public time, work time, too, I mean, to have that conversation together and work through that interpersonal relationship that we all have to build with each other as a council. Um, and then come back, and if nothing's changed, then we're going to have to have a tough conversation right here at the table. Um, but I am guessing that, um, most times when we have these conversations, I've had these conversations with you, the council member Jackson, and the council member Clark, when she was still on council, um, we come back to the table with something better than what we've been intended. Um, and I'm hoping, um, that that could be a solution for this particular issue on council. And it would live up to our ideals and what we proposed, um, through our resolutions on really civility and, uh, moving council forward this year.
Just in response to that, I, I have, um, provided great correspondence to all the council members prior to council member Williams coming in regarding the concern that there was a misrepresentation. Um, and I wanted to clarify based on the fact that it was, uh, proposed by Mayor Snyder during the October eleventh meeting based on the letter that was provided to each of you here, that was submitted to our Marshall Public School Board. Um, what exactly was voted on in that meeting? Um, and we did privately, um, before the last council meeting about this, and the discussion centered around up, updating the minutes. And I reached out to return campus regarding the correspondence family that was had. We suggested that the minutes would be updated. Um, I think that there's a lot of different ways to handle it, and I appreciate your feedback regarding the, the options that we have. Um, I think that it is important to note that we approved that vision, that there were renderings within it. I think that's why council member Lawler wrote the, the resolution that she did. Um, so I just wanted that to be clear, and that was, that was the purpose on this agenda item.
Yes, you have a comment? So, I mean, again, I, I'm just going to reiterate that. I'm just trying to, um, you want all this?
So I think that in, in the letter that you wrote, um, it's very interesting how language can be used. So it said that we weren't advocating, we weren't, as you are saying, we weren't, uh, commanding the Marshall School Board. And that's, I agree, that's what we spoke about, we weren't doing that. But when we approved the vision, it wasn't just this overarching partnership. It, it had renderings of a school and where it was located, and I think that is relevant to why that happened in this place.
But I, I, yeah, I know that when I talked privately that, um, you know, your issue was that you didn't want to go make sure that, that it didn't convey that we were, um, affirming that the elements were being located, that the Washington was on it. Um, and that it wasn't being intent, but that was not what was stated will be voted on. So, like I said, throughout that session, there were many comments made that that was not what you wanted to do. So that's, that's kind of like where my conflict is.
What? Yeah, okay. I mean, we, we're not, as I was saying many times, we're not in a position to approve something of that nature. So that the language wasn't that we were approving of that because that's not the timeline or the authority that we have. It was to support something that was proposed. Whereas if anything had been happening behind the scenes that are not brought to the public, and so this is a very important thing to be clear about what was proposed. And, and, you know, that, that there are options for our students.
No, and that's, that's kind of like what I was going to when I made a kind of F hoax for one, because that's what was in there. Because that, that was what we had approved. So that's what I had wanted to get corrected, and that's why I had wrote that letter. Because that was a misrepresentation, because what we voted on, like you're saying, is that support of a public private partnership. So that will.
And I'm just proposing that it be clear that there were renderings within that partnership. So anyone who was unclear about what we were supporting would be able to go and see that. That's right, yeah, I mean.
How, council member?
Sure, and I would, I would add, um, you know, we've talked a lot about transparency and, uh, communication and to going forward. This is a textbook example of why it is so important that when big ideas and things like that are brought to council that, um, we, we have conversations. So the April twenty fourth meeting was called eighteen hours before that Saturday morning.
Which is legal. That's, yes, that is. Let, let, let us speak, please.
So, so, so what, what I'm pointing out is, um, usually an eighteen hour meeting expects an urgency to pass something, there's something urgent about. Um, and, and usually it's something pretty significant. Um, this was a vision for the community from the House President. And again, as I said at that meeting, as I continue to say every meeting, the vision isn't bad, there is a great vision in there. Um, especially if it includes collaboration across the community with all of our organizations and leaders, that there's a true collaboration, this is a great vision. And an eighteen hour snack meeting with a memorandum sent to us within that eighteen hours beforehand, this is what we get. This right here is what we get. We, we voted on something hastily, it had a couple of renderings and drawings in there, four or five pages long. And again, the essence of it was beautiful, but now we're five months later and we're arguing over what was, what was put in the Marshall Public Schools minutes, and this represents what we actually talked about. So, yes, I'm gonna vote yes for Councilmember Lenu, you know, including that there were renderings in this to provide some clarity, because any clarity around this stuff is going to be extremely important moving forward. And so what, what I'm doing is I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't approve this, because we should approve Councilmember Lenu's meeting of change, there were renderings in that document. But the essence of our conversation did not hover around those renderings, it hovered around the partnership between the college and the community. And that's what was being expressed at the Marshall Public School Board, because they misrepresented what we discussed.
You got it, you got that.
And so we were trying to, so I think the mayor, and I think in all fairness, thank you, Mayor, for trying to do that. And I will support the Councilmember Lenu's effort to fix our minister of Representatives there. And also say, going forward, it's going to be extremely imperative that we talk to each other, and that we provide information as soon as we can, and that we have time to make good decisions. And that we don't have to have an eighteen hour meeting with a memorandum, and that we don't get to talk to our constituents about. That isn't, that isn't, that isn't fair governance to the people we work for. Because even if the vision is great, you still have that kind of doubt, and talk to people, and talk to each other, but I have. So, thank you, Councilmember Lenu tonight. I, I'm happy to support this change. And I also hope that moving forward, that this shows that we're gonna have a willingness to work with each other even more, and be even more of a partner of each other in council.
The council will be willing to restate whatever you want. Yes, that the April twenty fourth special meeting states that the council approved a public-private partnership vision that was expressed with renderings.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Williams? Reed? Jackson?
Yeah.
Waller?
Yeah.
Lenu?
Yeah.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. We said that, what would you like to see at the next meeting? Yes, Councilmember. I'd like to add as a discussion item about creating a minority business committee, advisory committee? Any other items? Yep, I will be putting back on the agenda. At the last council meeting, we presented three potential knowledge options for our local streets. At the end of that meeting, I kind of, I got no direction from council. If you were happy with the information that was presented to you, if you wanted different information, so I will bring that back on the agenda, there's some type of direction from you all. Whether if you're good with the information that was provided, I think then we need to start engaging with our residents and educating on what this means. So that will be, I would like to add it as our discussion agenda. Any other items? Yes, Mayor Jackson.
Yes, I know we're working with the water waste, wastewater, but I'd like to see a matrix on our water. Brought to council. So basically, what's in it, the condition and the quality of our water.
So water quality report?
Is, is matrix on our water, is a matrix. And it just, that's what's inside the matrix. When I'm metric, I should say metric, what's inside a metric, yes, is what's inside the water, the condition and the quality of our water. And then going forward, I'd like to have at least every three months that we know where we at with our water.
So do you, would you like a discussion? Because I think we just released our water quality insurance report, and I believe it's mailed to all residents so that you have that. I'd be happy to inhale that out to council so you can read that. Any other items?
Yes, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Just to clarify, we're looking at, do you want that to be a discussion as well?
Yes, please, yes.
And, and then now that we have the whole council, can we have the discussion in a total of council relations? Basically, work that was established in the resolution?
Yeah, I have an update, and I'm sorry to interrupt my managers' reports, so I'll be opening first interaction on that.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmembers, who are working in different areas of the city with the competency plan? And I'm a factor, not the next place that I would be at next, at our next meeting, so that people can come and fill it out if they don't have access to it.
So is that an agenda item that you want to put up for next agenda?
Yeah.
So your meeting, meeting locations is what you want to put on, are your meeting locations is what you want to put on the next agenda? Councilmember Williamson?
So now that we, there are seven of us again, one of the things we also put off from that resolution was getting a coach for council. I know that the city manager has started their coaching practice, but the next step is a coach for council, that we can start to see some synergies happen. So I hope that that can happen, that does not have to be a discussion, actually, I don't, some updated, something about.
I have updated our call, so you can.
Thank you.
Any other? All right. I'd like comments. So at this time, I'm going to be inviting the families and families to come on. Anybody at all? So you want to stage your name and address, and look at three minutes to address council.
Thank you, Mayor Wayne Arnold, nine oh six Hall Street. First of all, I, I got a question. With this current, with the current sidewalk project, it just addressed the issues we got it on Hall Street with the, with the, with the curb and the sidewalks, just the children, just, just, just the children just riding bikes over. And people would unveil on the side of the curb, where the curb is raised upwards, true. I've been preparing about this at least twenty years, nothing has been done. It's just been an ongoing issue relative to the bill on that curb. And I've seen children take their bikes and going, the sidewalk is like this, or it's tripping on the sidewalk. So that's, so my question is, is that gonna be addressed on this sidewalk issue that we're doing now? Or did, did anybody know about that, you know about the issues on Hall Street?
Yes, actually, the mayor went out, she took pictures and nothing else I could say about it.
So, so is that gonna be addressed with this, this, the sidewalk issue that's going on now? Because, I mean, this was brought up years ago, it's never been, it's really dangerous. So we might want to take a look at that while we're fixing the, while we're fixing the sidewalks. Oh, boy, I forgot what I was gonna say, I'll tell you what. I think the, the public didn't know anything about the vision. We didn't know anything about any of this. So I tell you what, we don't know after tomorrow, because the election will tell everything. And so we don't know, I think it was a good idea to chair, you know, because we, we don't have too long to come on, so that might be a good idea to chair that. But, uh, but, yeah. Yeah, okay. First of all, Mayor and Councilmember Waller, I'd like to thank you for considering me to serve on the Equity Task Board. I think somebody's dragging a D here. I mean, I thought I was the last member to get sworn in, and it looks like I was the first. We only got two members, and I think it takes seven. So we got like six precedes here. So why don't everybody do like she did? Nominate somebody that's gonna be fair and equitable, and ask them if they want to serve on the board. Get them sworn in, and let's get this going, because it's, it's really needed. Because I, I'm not even sure if it's not needed now, we don't know what's coming down the pipeline. And equity is priority, it's definitely priority, because we're gonna have some ongoing issues where this board is really gonna come in here. Thank you.
Anybody else at the stand and in the dress? Council?
Hi, Morris Arhoy, four seventeen Elizabeth Street in Albion. I just wanted to say, first of all, that no one called me today. I just got an agenda, and I thought, oh, that would be good, that meeting. And I also want to say, and I would love to talk to anybody in this room about this issue. We do have a, a school, we have, like, three schools, right? In Albion right now, we've got one called Harrington. And the, the Board of Education and Marshall Public Schools does not treat that school very well. Those students are not served very well. That school, they don't know how to deal with it. And I also want to add, and I'm not trying to offend anybody, and I'm not trying to cause any trouble here, but the college has not done anything with Harrington for at least two years. It is right across the street from the college. And they have done bupkis, which is a nice Yiddish term for absolutely nothing. And I'm not gonna go any further on that, except to say that that school is in a crisis. And those kids are suffering. They are suffering every single day. It's in crisis, it needs to be treated like it's in crisis, and it's not. And those kids are suffering, and I hear about it every single day. And if anybody thinks that's not true, go over there and volunteer for a half an hour in one of those lower grade classrooms. And it gets me going. How Marshall Public Schools ignores that school, tries to do what they do with schools in Marshall to this school in Albion, and it doesn't work. The comments I have heard that are racist from people in Marshall about that school, people should be ashamed. They should be demoted or fired, from what I have heard people say about that school. But that school is where kids in this town are going to school right now. And the college isn't doing anything, there's no engagement whatsoever. And the Marshall Public Schools doesn't know how to deal with it. And that's all I gotta say, and that makes me mad. And I am happy to talk to anybody in this room or outside this room, or on video, about that school. Thank you.
Okay. Here around ten sixteen South Superior Street, a couple of things. Congratulations, Councilmember Williams in Precinct One, just a couple of things. So the council can voice its opinion on issues. They're called non-binding resolutions. And in fact, right now, it's happening at the state, they're withdrawing all the state house and congressional districts, the state sentences. And we voted in twenty eighteen to support that process, so that the districts wouldn't be gerrymandered. It didn't have an effect, it just said the city, that's their policy and support it. So you do have the power to do that. To, what happened in April really is a, a case for an example of why the council should really know the rules and follow them. Because if you all passed a resolution, that would, when you all made the motion, that would have kind of cleared up all of this, right? So I think in the rules, it actually says, when you all take action, it has to be, in some written form, a resolution or ordinance. And so that would have solved that, we would have had this issue. Regarding the mayor and the letter, okay? Each of you have the right to email the attorney and ask for their legal opinion. And then come vote and tell us if you want what he said. The question you should ask him is, is the simple question, can the mayor execute a document in her official capacity? So saying, I'm the mayor of Al, without council approval? That simple question. And when he gives the answer, you can come back and tell us. If he says no, then she violates the protocol. It's very simple, that's a very simple thing. And then finally, I guess I'm gonna talk about, or address Mr. Avery's, I'm slurring his name. But to my understanding, Dr. Johnson didn't start until last year in the middle of the pandemic. And before that was Dr. Disler, so I don't think that he would have had that input with Harrington. And then plus with the students kind of being quarantined, that probably accounts for why it was that, that was not that involvement in the school district. And then finally, I'm gonna say this, and I really debated about saying this, but, okay. Hypocrisy is saying, do as I say, and not as I do. And what's happening right now is we have a once in several generation opportunity to do something positive for our kids who are facing the conditions that he mentioned, right? It's really racial disparity, that's really what it is, it's race, right? But then, when you look at the, for example, the campaign finance report that just came out from County, for the group that's opposing the bond, the two highest donors are Dave Attison and Bill Douglas, right? And, and the thing about it is, they both gave five hundred dollar donations in the past couple of weeks to that, right? So the, the concern is that, when you trace the influence, whether it's John Face, whether it's the concerns I raised with Al in First Thing, and Councilmember Wilkinson, the question is, are these people actually working for what's in the best interest of a diverse Albion? Or are they trying to hold on to status and power, which is what Mr. Brewer was saying? People have been excluded for generations, and it's time to change, thank you.
Okay, so I've done a lot of research. Oh, Alicia, free time, this is your, I've done a lot of research of root cause and corrective action. I have done five whys, I've done fishbone diagrams, because Harrington does have issues. And because of the age of the children, it's alarming that a hundred and sixty-two children were suspended in a year. That's caused for, that's caused for concerns. And what I've found out through a lot of the root cause and corrective action is Garrett's right, yes, fifty-four percent of the children at Harrington are black. And seventeen percent of the children are making proficiency with math. And it's even less, you know, when you start going down the board, but, and we're looking at about eighteen percent of reading. We need to figure out as a community, I mean, like all of us, like every single person in this room, why are we like being, because it's not about that, it's about the kids. This is not about our personal issues or our agendas. We need to educate our children, because if we don't, we're gonna have problems in the future, because they won't even be able to sit at that board and read the papers and do basic math. They, we need to be able to get, get something going, and it's gonna take a village, not what's going on. I'm tired of hearing racist, racist, racist. I just think, Marshall, 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 every time I hear it, it's just like, okay, we're all racist, we're all biased, it's inherent, it's, it, we have subconscious bias, it's not our fault, we, we all work on it. But when it comes to some of the things I'm hearing about Harrington, I wonder, how can we integrate Marshall schools, which are predominantly white, and Albion schools that are predominantly black? Because when children grow up together, they learn from each other's cultures, and they grow, and they accept each other. And when it comes to homogeneous, I don't even know if I'm saying that right, but when it comes to having all black kids or all white kids, the only way that those things work is when you have gifted children. Gifted children, because you got, you know, the really super smart kid helping the struggling kid with his math or with his reading. But if you got all your kids struggling, you got the best struggling kid helping the other kids. That, it's just, it's just the way the world works. I mean, I can't, I can't really change that. But I'd like to see us come together on this. I mean, my personal thing is nothing to do with not wanting a school in Albion. My personal thing is the fact that I don't want to see children go to school where there's cadmium and nickel and aluminum and lead and mercury. Because if you look at some statistics, if a woman is pregnant and she is four miles away from the super fun sites, which we have fourteen, there is a twenty-two percent increase that she's gonna have birth defects. And I'm not talking about physical, I'm talking about the kids have behavioral issues, you've got learning disabilities, and you have I E Ps at Harrington that are seventeen percent right now. I'm sorry, I'm out of time, everybody, but you know what? We can do this, Albion, we seriously can, let's do this together.
Jennifer Delaney, Homer Road, Eppert Township. I just wanted to make the point that one of the reasons that I got involved in being a person and a group against this bond is that this bond does not address the educational inequalities in our current system as it is. Marshall Public Schools, which is really should be named Marshall Albion Public Schools, is not serving Albion. And those test scores that we have since, since annexation demonstrate that in a horrible world where all of you, all of you should be... all of you should be concerned about that. These scores are absolutely horrendous. Harrington currently is ten percent in the bottom, ten percent of Michigan schools, Michigan elementary schools. Every single person in this room should be horrified by that number. That is awful. That is not make our future. Black, white, yellow, green, purple, blue, I don't care. You can talk about race all day long until you're blue and face people all down dead. But it is not about that. It is about the education of our children. It is about their future, which is our future. Who are our leaders in twenty years? I might not even be here in twenty years. A lot of us might not be here twenty, thirty years from now. We have children who currently at Harrington, these are directly from the websites that enable us to put together a table telling us that in English Language Arts, in Harrington had two hundred and sixty-two students enrolled in two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. And of those two hundred and sixty-two students, two hundred and twenty-five of them were not proficient in English Language Arts. Why is that important? How are you going to communicate? How are our children gonna communicate if they can't read, write, comprehend, and answer questions about what it is that they're learning? Tell me, how, how is that gonna work? Math, for the last year recorded, which is a two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, Harrington had two hundred and fifty-five students enrolled. Out of that two hundred and fifty-five students, that was the entire school, case or five, two hundred and thirty-two of those students are not proficient. Ninety percent of them cannot do math at their grade level. This is the only thing that we should be concerned about. Every single elementary school in Marshall Public Schools, where there are four of them, none of them are higher than sixty percent. I have all four schools. I have the data. Walters is the only one that gets almost up to sixty percent. Ooh, yay. You know what that means? That's a failing grade. That's a D minus in my book. Forty percent of the best students in the best school are not meeting proficiency. Harrington is at the absolute dead, dead last bottom. Every single one of you should go home right now and think about, if you don't have kids, which a lot of you do, if you have kids, you look at them and you tell your sellers. These kids deserve better than that. They deserve an education. I know that I'm out of time. But I think that all of us could agree that the most important thing to concentrate on and focus on is the kids' education, not a bond that's gonna provide a school, a physical building.
I'm Hope Warren. I live at six twenty-five Sycamore Street apartment two. Lifelong Albion citizen. I went to Harrington. My kids went to Harrington. And as I sit here and listen, a lot of the issues that I'm hearing doesn't have anything to do with the school. It's a parental issue. That's the issue. It's not the school. It's the parental, the lack of parental involvement. Now, I don't know too much about this bond. I don't know too much about this proposal. But what I do know is that Albion kids need what's gonna work. And if this bond, if this proposal, and along with the parental involvement is going to work, I say let's do it. I say stop fighting because that's not gonna get us anywhere except for where we are right now. That's all it's gonna do. We gotta learn to work together. How can we expect our kids to work together to learn anything if we can't even do it as adults? We gotta get it together. That's everybody.
Sunny Brown, seven thirteen Orchard Drive. I'll be quick because I know advisor radio call. Congratulations, Mr. Williams. I also want to take a moment to say, Ms. Thomas, great job. You guys had a really tough choice. You had two strong candidates. And I was happy to see two strong candidates want to represent Precinct One. So let me start. Second of all, I want to say, you know, I've heard a lot of talk. I listen. But I'm also very vocal. And you know, data is good and listening to statistics is good, but you know, you, when you develop a relationship with these children at Harrington, I know a lot of the children. I know a lot of their parents. I don't look at them as a standardized test score. I look at these children as children. They can communicate very well. You ask them what they want and what they need. They can, they can very well tell you that. And I'm just gonna say this before I, before my time is up. Race and racism, always difficult conversation. People do not like to have tough conversations. But before there can be unity, which we need unity, there has to be truth. And we cannot ignore race and economic status and the role it plays in the quality of education that our students have. You know, I've been, I've been hollering for years about the inequities in the Marshall Public School system since they annexed our children. But until we're ready to really talk about race and what standardized tests may tell you our kids can't read, I know these children, they're smart. They're very smart and they're very capable. They need services, rapid round services, because you don't know their stories. So I'm gonna ask all of us, go out and vote tomorrow. I'm not an elected official, so I'll say, we need this bond. Our children need a new building. Vote yes, I'm fine. I will also say, whatever happens tomorrow, we all need to roll up our sleeves and figure out what we need to do as a community to support our young people and our children and get them from under this stereotypical data statistic that they're just, you know, children who can't read and can't do math. Because I know these babies and they're smart. So, thank you.
Dave Atchison, Waterway West, Erie. A lot of good things were said. Talked about hypocrisy. Kind of hypocritical to say, oh, well, Bill Dobbs and Dave Atchison, they were the big donors. They gave five hundred piece. Let's talk about the Marshall School Board President, who's also the legal counsel for the college. He's got every reason in the world coming into his pocket to support that, gave a thousand dollars. Let's talk about the architecture firm that they're hiring to do this, gave five hundred dollars. That's the big donors for people pushing this. Talked about parental involvement makes all the difference in the world. Absolutely agree with that. That's the number one factor when you look at it. Where are you gonna get more parental involvement from these kids? On the west side, where they live, where their parents live? Or on Michigan Avenue next to the college? I guess they'll go out and get on the city bus to go over there. We don't have local public transportation. I wish we did. Heard about, the college wants to do all these great wonderful things. I think they did some pretty good things for the community under the last president. I saw students over at the college all the time, welcomed them in at the school year, over there helping. I couldn't tell you what the students are doing now. I'm not saying they're not doing anything. But if you want to do what's right for the kids, then look at what's gonna be good for education. You have Harrington Elementary. It's an old building. We have other schools here. Harrington Elementary has nineteen classrooms and a student teacher ratio of under fourteen. They wanna spend millions, tens of millions of dollars to build a school with twelve classrooms. The student teacher ratio is gonna go up. You're gonna pack more kids into the classroom. That's another factor that's proven to affect education and learning. What's the student teacher ratio? They tell you enrollment's going up. You look at the statistics, it's not, it's going down. If you look at their own paperwork that the school board put in, it's going down, has been going down, and projected to go down. So people have a problem when there is not ethical conduct by the school board. People have a problem when they put out false information. We're at capacity. And so our answer is to spend tens of millions of dollars to reduce capacity. It doesn't add up. Put the school over next to Watson, where the kids are, the majority of the kids and the families, so that the parents can be involved. And the only way we got a say in that is voting the bond down.
Anybody else like to address council?
So council under comments, council.
Oh, I'm sorry. No worries, thank you, Mayor. So you have a brief report. It's a few things that bring you all on. The company has a planned community engagement survey. So the community is making the survey that goes along with the city's conference plan update is now live. The link to complete the survey is on the city's website. Paper copies can be picked up here at St. Paul. Councilmembers, if you'd like paper copies, we have to provide some opportunities and can pass them out to Precinct One Precincts. The survey is open through Wednesday, December eighth. Please take the time to complete the survey. This will help determine our vision for the next five years for, for the city. So it's very important that we give as much feedback and participation as possible. Albion Swim Lessons, the first session. So the first session was completed last Thursday, October twenty eighth. The Y instructors received a tremendous amount of positive feedback from the parents and they could see great performance in their children in the water. The second set of swim lessons begins this Thursday, November fourth. Six classes will run the first Thursday, November, the first three Thursdays in December. You can find the schedule on the city's website. MML Leadership Coach just have to provide you all with the update. I have my second coaching session this morning with MML Coach. Loving working with her. I think the council would enjoy working with her as well. I did receive a request from the New York Council to look, to see if it's possible to have the first session. I know I mentioned we have a joint session where it's a council and then the city's leadership team. However, I received a request to see if we could do the first session with just council and the leadership coach. I've been talking with her this morning. She actually feels that's a great idea. So I will be sending an email out to all of you on council with the dates to determine that first session. It will be a whole day session. She did want me to share that. She's looking from eight AM to three PM, three thirty. We can do this during the week, however, I know we do have few members who do work during the day. So we are open to holding something on Saturday. So this will be only members of council or the home city administration or state staff. And then once you all have the opportunity to sit down with Coach, we will look into doing a joint session with council and then the city's leadership team so that we all can get on the same, same page. So please, people look out for that due survey and take it as soon as possible so that we can get something scheduled as the holidays approach. I want to make sure that we can get something plugged into everyone's calendar. And then I just want to remind everyone that we have the twenty twenty-two budget study sessions for this Saturday at nine AM. We will be meeting here, council, to review twenty twenty-two budget. And then I just want to encourage everyone to get out and vote tomorrow is election day.
Councilwoman, do you have comments?
Yes. I've been on both sides of the table with, with that education. I've been a teacher. And I've also been out to the, out to Garrity School. Last year, I went out to Garrity School for six months, three hours a day, three days a week, and I helped kids. I went out to Garrity School. Now I had lunch with the principal and we kind of talked about some things. I'm not thirty out of date. I took because when I left school, the superintendent I had said, well, you've got to be moved in one day. Now, I taught school for thirty-six years now. Five more than thirty-six years worth of stuff in one day. It was hard. I just got everybody's truck and I just put stuff on, pick it home. I'm now trying to get my garage cleaned out after six years. So I got all this stuff together. Some of them were brand new school interior for every math, reading, everything. And I hauled it all out to Harrington School. Didn't even have a table for three of them. I did that last Thursday, Thursday before last, and then last Thursday, I took another couple of trucks of stuff to give to them to have to work with. And, and you know, we need to have a new school. I taught at Harrington. That was not a good school to begin. You could smell different because it's just not like that. You know, and, and, and they were fixing the roof and I've got tar running down the back of my womb from where they're fixing the roof, but the possibility was the roof was messed up. The tar is running down the back of our womb. And I had kids that ended up in the hospital from that. And, and just like mine, ventilation is terrible. And I was so happy to know the school that my granddaughter goes to in Virginia, in the summer, they tore that whole school down and put up a school that's got a lot of ventilation. That whole back system is all through her school. And I brought you the lady that was speaking about the fact that, yeah, parents, parents need to get in and they need to do stuff because a lot of these kids over COVID last year just really did not get what they needed to have. You're at home, you're supposed to do your work there. And if you don't have a parent that's gonna sit there and see what you're doing. I mean, my grandchild, she's feeling fantastic. But she got school. It just so happened that her mom had ringed and knew that she had left the room, told the teacher she didn't feel good, went out up in the backyard jumping on the track lane. And mom called home and said, if you hit your butt and it's at your desk and sit down and put your computer on, I will be at home. You know, and, and so, so she got herself together. Now, kids are born to be kids. We can't blame them for being kids. But adults have got to be adults. We need to get that, that, that boat in and get that school built. We need to hold Marshall accountable for what they are supposed to be doing for our kids. And we need to hold ourselves accountable. And if you got extra time in your day, go out there and help. I sit down there, went in that office, and I'm sitting down there while I'm waiting for them to try to find a table that they have a good vibe for me to put the stuff out of my car on. And I'm sitting there and so five kids coming in the office, behavior problems. I'm sitting talking to one little guy and I said to him, what's your name? So he told me his name is, lips is all stuck out. He's mad. And I said, you wanna know my name? So he looked at me and said, yes, I call it my name. And I just sit there and started talking to them. What happened? All the rest of those kids started coming over with their chair, sitting in the group with me and him. We're just sitting there talking. And they all were just calming down from what they were doing. So, you know, we have a responsibility. They don't have to be your child. I don't have a kid out there. I don't have a grandkid out there. But still, I go out there and volunteer time for their kids and they need help. And if you don't help them, okay, this is our children. It's our future. You better hurry up and that plus future is not gonna be too big a company.
Any other comments? It's totally the brother. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So is, is, just for clarity, is this supposed to be a blueprint for the Denebula Project? That was a very early on proposal. Okay. I just wondered if anybody had received any information about the Macintosh project, because I haven't saw anything. So I'd like to see something. Just say something. And I didn't say a student energy report. Was one in there?
No, it's not. I, okay. I was out of the office. I think I prepared my this afternoon. I think I need to know, but I share too often.
We can definitely get you that information coming. Yes.
Yes, I don't think Councilwoman Law was here when they made the presentation. So my information findings were, was it within, in a packet? It was in the packet. Now, when the presentation was made on the thirteen projects.
Yes.
I, I would be happy to provide, I'm coupled in with the final product that actually went to Mr. De Laclay. I truly do not know how that version from, from March was made available to, to the public. That wasn't something that was publicly available from the foundation. But I would be, I would gladly give you the final product. That is still called a Looper for, for Albion, but it allows the thirteen projects and also has some timeline and matching. Myself and Ms. De Giel, the chair of the foundation, did a And also has some timeline and matching. Um, I, um, myself and uh Ms. DeGio, the chair of the foundation, did a presentation a couple of weeks ago, I counsel that. Um, couple of the decks in the quest, and it was brought to the recreation advisory committee. Um, and, and so I'd be happy to provide you all.
Okay, I just wanted to see, you know, you know, and people are asking questions, so.
It seems there's a bit of misinformation, which that, that I can miss clearly.
Any other counsel or comments?
Thank you, Sarah Snyder. Um, I, I just wanted to acknowledge the amount of engagement that happened in tonight's meeting. I know I, I do this a lot, but I, I, I reflect how much I shared and I appreciate. Everyone who came and shared what they did. I learned a lot and um there, there's, there's so much to take into account. So I just encourage all our residents who are active and, and able to come out, um, just to know how much we appreciate you taking the time to make sure that we're informed. And um, yeah, encourage people to take the comprehensive plan survey. I heard a lot of people saying that it's clear that we have a lot of needs. Um, so the opportunity to weigh in on those needs and the experience within your community is vital information that we need. So please um, uh, come down, get a copy of the survey, encourage people to take it, send it out. Uh, we definitely need help with that. And um. I, I. Of course, vote tomorrow, please, because um. Contrary to what was just shared by our former mayor, um, bonds are extensive work that take a long time to get on the ballot. And if they are not passed, it takes a long time to do anything. Um, and so I know that there is a tremendous amount of work needed. Um, I was fortunate enough to work with Marshall Public Schools and Star Commonwealth and other social organizations in our community. Right after the annexation, specifically talking about the racism and classism that our youth and our families are all facing. And I know that that work was in no way exhaustive. Um, it's very clear, um, and seeing what people are sharing that we need to be able to do. Much more in that space. Um, but unfortunately, my understanding from speaking with people who have created this bond proposal. That we do not have um the resources allocated if, at least another four years until our students have uh what they would need. So I just want us to take into consideration the timelines that we're looking at and how long it's been since resources have been allocated for our community.
Any other comments? Well, I am so happy that Councilman Williams is now part of our team. Looking forward to working with you. Um, so welcome and we'll definitely get you going in echo.
Thank you, Lawler. I appreciate you.
Much as for Jake.
Councilmember Reed. Reed, Reed, Reed. Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Leanne.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Yeah.
Liliana.
Yes.
And M. Einstein.
Yes. Megan, you're in the thirty of you.
Hey, look at everybody. Yeah, they're good. How are you? Good, how are you doing? Congratulations. Yeah, very, very excited.